Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January 21 Webster Board of Education meeting. Would everyone please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you and welcome. We do have a change to the agenda. Brian, would you prefer that we remove all of the wording, secondary bid work under Board Business?
Yeah, just going to table that one. The Schrader secondary bid work, yep.
Okay, if everybody had a chance to take a look at that email, can we have a motion, please, then, to amend the agenda?
I'll make that motion. And I'll second it, Tammy.
Second by Linda, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all. And moving into the liaison reports, everyone received the link of the prerecorded statements from Michael and Charisma, Michael Schrader and Charisma Thomas, and we're grateful to them for their time to coordinate their report and to share it with us. We very much appreciate hearing from them. And then Joan Bardanas also shared the WTA report on behalf of all the work that's happening, all the good work that's happening across the district. So we definitely appreciate that.
Hello, Board of Education. Obviously, I'm back giving you another report, and I'm super happy to do that again today. So first off, we have some really exciting things happening at Schrader. So we recently had our annual Day of Giving. So this year in 2020, it looked a little different than previous years, but students stayed true to the tradition and loved making some ornaments and decorated cookies to give to families in need. And they created kindness rocks to spread around, and they also made some holiday cards for nursing home residents. And overall, it was a great success, and we had a wonderful Day of Giving. So next up, our speech and debate team has been really doing some great things as well. So we are competing virtually this year, and they've competed in several local tournaments. The team has had several first-place winners, including Felix H. and Jason L. for public forum debate, Sophia V. for original oratory, and Lauren B. for oral interpretation. Virtual tournaments have given the team opportunity to expand the range of competition. Recently, they actually competed with Regis High School, sorry, at the Regis High School Christmas Class Tournament with over 550 students from 35 schools. And Sophia V. was a semifinalist in that, and she competed in the Sharemaid Tournament, which had 300 students, and she was a semifinalist in that. Although the virtual experience has not been ideal, students have been given the opportunity, and they've rolled with it, and they've been doing great. And then from Math League, we had a successful meet for January. Felix H. and Jacqueline H. scored double digits, which is very impressive. And Felix H., Jacqueline H., and Alex G. had perfect scores in a category. Both Brooke and I competed in Math League, and we love doing it, even though it's part virtual, part in person, it's still great to do. And then finally, for the NYSE American Scholastic Achievement League, every year, a group of eighth graders from Sprey participates in the ASA League to see where they place among other New York students. So last year, 13,000 eighth graders competed, and we actually had our very own Jacqueline H. come in first out of every student in New York, which is very cool to know. So congratulations to her, and that's really all the news I have for you. So I'm glad that I was able to present this again, and I can't wait to see you all.
Good evening, everyone. This is the first time I am presenting. My name is Charisma, and I am new to Webster Thomas as a sophomore. I am also one of the newest student liaisons. I am so honored to be able to have this opportunity to speak to you all today. During December, the Student Council created a Fun and Safe 2020 Holiday Spirit Week. On Monday, December 14, and Tuesday, December 15, the theme was Winter Wonderland, where the students wore their favorite white clothing. Thursday, December 17, and Friday, December 18, was Ugly Sweater Day. The students wore their ugliest sweaters. And Monday, December 21, and Tuesday, December 22, was Cozy Day. The students wore their cozy socks and pajamas to cap off the holiday-themed activities before winter break. Since there were no holiday concerts, our wonderful music department put on live, multiple live performances for all the students and staff to enjoy. To ensure safety going into the holiday break, the Webster Thomas staff started their Mask Up campaign, focusing on the correct way of wearing a mask in order to keep our community safe. We acknowledge our students and staff members for the month of December. The Students of the Month were James Z. in 9th, Andrew B. in 10th, Alex M. in 11th, and Jared C. in 12th. Watch out for my name next month, I'm working hard. And the Staff Member of the Month was Mrs. Pogano. We are so appreciative to have such amazing students and staff in our Thomas building. Wednesday, December 16, was the 36th Annual Early Recognition Virtual Black Scholar Ceremony. More than 2,000 students were acknowledged for their academic success, including Jayden and Jalen Barnwell, Rajan Mosher, and many more. We congratulate those who achieved this attainment. We are excited to celebrate with the Titan Girls bowling team, who won their first match against Canada this bowling season, with the winning score of 625. Upon their return from winter break, students have started their course selection. The students conversed with Thomas staff members in order to receive recommendations as to which class to take next school year. This is always an exciting time for our students. On January 6, national headlines were made. After the siege at the Capitol, Thomas staff has been allowing students to talk through the event in a safe space, where everyone can express the emotions that our country is going through. We are blessed to have such a caring and understanding staff to help guide our students through these difficult events. The design and drafting for production students donated cutting boards and coasters to the Wildwing Sanctuary in Minden Ponds. A huge thank you to Mr. Campo and the DDP students. During the holiday break, 10 Honor Society members recorded themselves performing Christmas carols and shared them with the nursing homes. Thank you Triumph for bringing joy to people in our Webster community. Thank you for your time. Have a delightful evening. Go Titans!
Hello, and Happy New Year to you all, as we welcome in 2021 with open arms. It's already started on good news. We're all still here, our remotes remote, and our kids are in class, our hybrid model. Our WTA members, including our educators, school psychologists, school counselors, social workers, speech and language therapists, OT and PT, nurses, TOCs, are close to 800 number, and our students remain our focus. Their safety, our shared priority. One might say a touch of normalcy as this year starts off is with course requests. Students, even though uncertainty is upon us, planning must continue. While being socially distanced, students are meeting with their school counselors after they have reviewed with their teachers the course options for the next year. Student choice and student voice remain priorities. Hundreds of letters of applications have been written and applications filed. Guidance has been given to help providing students with help while filling out personal statements. And at this time, students continue to ask WTA members to assist them with the completion of scholarship letters and writing of letters of recommendation for them. Good news is hopefully in the near future for many of our students. Schrader hallways look fantastic. Thank you Pete DeWitt and others. Google Earth gurus Christian Ubrich and Mel Drury collaborate to make their students' Wednesday remote classes appealing and engaging. They created a virtual field trip, visiting Google Earth and moving to places to experience the real weather on our world. WTA members reaching out to all our students, whether on quarantine, they are remote schedule, or they are in person. We have members like Kelly Hill writing letters to students, Jamie Berticurdi making daily contact with those, sometimes via computer because of quarantine. Art teachers have dropped off cool supplies, watercolors included, so students can tap into their artistic talents and explore that part of their life. Our mental health staff simply rock. WTA members are reaching out to each other as well, while we understand the importance of being in this pandemic all together. Whether teaching remote or hybrid, we continue to lead the way in finding and utilizing the right technology, not just to help teach, but to make sure our students are learning at all levels, elementary, middle, and high school. Our remote teachers have taken on unimaginable tasks, and they are still at it daily. We all know that our passion lies, and our students' passions lie, not only in the classroom, but outside of it. Those members that take on clubs and coaching are doing it in ways nothing short of admirable. Most clubs and teams have been led by unit members with an unwavering dedication to who? Our students. Art, music, and drama groups have to plan way out of the box to encourage and provide opportunities for students to continue, to have real experiences. People like Mark Stetzel have gone beyond. Students who once looked forward to acting on stage can't do that, so he provides his group with another avenue, writing scripts and acting them out on the Webster Thomas Radio Show. This allows for students to explore their interests, explore their passion, and maybe an avenue that was never seen before. The workouts and training sessions our student athletes participate in are run by their coaches, who are thinking and planning in ways that will be meaningful, that will foster growth, and that will provide opportunities to connect with their teammates, as well as will be fun. And talking about fun, we have once again been recognized on the state level. Last year, our WTA was recognized on the New York State level for its community outreach. This year, we did it again. Jen Hayfee, we congratulate you, as she has started our Webster Women's Committee, and she was recently appointed to the state-level Women's Committee. It's great news, as we have a Webster representative on the state level. More fun, Lauren Pogano is putting her newly-acquired fitness instructor certification to work, as she is offering ways for people to stay fit mentally and physically. It's an honor to be the WTA liaison and share with you, the Board of Education. We wish you health, happiness, and kindness, and we look forward to the day we can all report in person. Thank you.
Moving on to Superintendent's Report. Carmen will provide an update on coronavirus and vaccinations. If you would, please.
Good evening, everybody. Sorry, I had to figure out how to use Zoom. It's been a while. He says sarcastically. So, yeah, you know, I wanted to talk about two items. One is the testing that we started doing last week, and then I'm going to segue from testing into vaccines. So we started testing 5% of our students each week. We started that last week. We did have a couple, I think we had two positives out of the entire sample, and this week, we have one positive. Our positivity rate this week is 0.25%. So in last week, I think it was, I think it was 0.8. But either, it doesn't really matter. I mean, it was a really, really low number. And again, it goes back to the point that, you know, in October, November, when we did this, and we tested 20% of our students in a matter of a couple weeks, we had a positivity rate right around 0.3, I think it was, and we're getting something similar now. And again, it sort of goes to the point of schools really are really this incredibly safe bubble that the teachers and students enter, and staff, enter each day. And why is it a safe bubble? Well, it's a safe bubble because, you know, we still have that six-foot rule, so we still have distancing, and we're all being masked. And when that is followed, as, you know, we can see that our rates are really, really low. So we've had a couple, I got a couple emails over the last couple of weeks regarding, you know, when does the six-foot rule go away? Why can't we have full-time school right now? And why can't we bring back our, basically, our 8,400 students? Why can't we just bring them back, like, tomorrow, and just have them spend six and a half hours each day in our buildings? And the reason really is grounded in science. And as you guys know, we have, from the very onset of the pandemic, on March 13 is when, that was our last day of school last spring, was Friday the 13th. From that day, we have really committed ourselves to following the recommendations of Dr. Mendoza and the County Health Department, and following really the science that's behind all of those recommendations. And, you know, kudos to the Board, you know, the seven of you, and before Janice came on on July 1, Jan Streggy was part of this group, for never wavering from that. I know that, you know, many, they're definitely a vocal group, has, you know, has demanded that school be back in session and so on. But I do not see school coming back full-time this year. And the simple reason is the six-foot rule is really not going away. And the only way that that six-foot rule goes away is when a whole bunch of us have been vaccinated. And that is the key to full-time school starting in September. At the end of August, seven months ago, or no, probably not seven months ago, five months ago, at the end of August, I recorded my opening-day remarks with my father. I'm not sure if you guys remember this, but, and we had referred to this year as the bridge year. And my dad and I visited three bridges in Webster, and we told dad jokes, we sat on my mom's memorial bench, and we talked about the bridge year being, how do we get from where we are right now to full-time school at the other end of that bridge? And we talked about the real key to that, the key to getting across a bridge is really a vaccine. So I'm going to segue into the second part of my remarks. We are at that point. We're at the point of the vaccine. And as all of you know, I don't know if any of the Board members have been vaccinated yet. My father was vaccinated yesterday. I know that a couple people in this meeting were vaccinated last night at Syracuse. But we have, we have two vaccines right now. Both of those vaccines are double dosers, you need two doses. And many of our teachers, many of our teachers and staff are being vaccinated. If I'm going to take a wild guess, I'd say right around 5% so far, maybe 5% to 10%. So the vaccine is what's really going to lead to herd immunity, and that will really help us sort of get back to full-time school. We may still have masks on next September, but we will absolutely cross that bridge with the help of the vaccine and get to the other side. I know the supply has been really frustrating for everybody, for Dr. Mendoza, for all the pharmacies, for many of you who are trying to get vaccines. It's sort of like scoring a Springsteen concert ticket. And, you know, you're trying to refresh your screen every three or four seconds, and hopefully you get, hopefully you score those tickets. And we're facing that right now. Well, what's going to change? Well, hopefully, the production of the two vaccines that we have will be ramped up with the, and I forget the correct name of it, but President Biden is going, has already said, the National Defense Production Act, I think it is. And hopefully, that will help ramp up production. But the other piece will be, in about a week and a half, Johnson &amp; Johnson will release their Phase III clinical, sorry, third phase of their clinical trials. And the preliminary data that was released five days ago was incredibly, was incredibly good. 90% effective. People have these wonderful antibodies, their antibody is 50 days out, 75 days out, whatever, but it's after only one dose. And it really can be a game changer. Okay, so it adds the third vaccine, so there's an increase in supply just because you're adding a third vaccine, and the fact you only need one dose is also wonderful for us and for our students as well. So now we don't really have to worry about our, you know, parents trying to get two doses of a vaccine in a matter of three or four weeks. All of that, hopefully, will be happening over the next four weeks, through February, through February break, and perhaps maybe by March 1, we have access to Johnson &amp; Johnson's one-dose vaccine. I'm crossing my fingers for that. So I know people are frustrated because we all want to be back in school full-time, and I am really confident that we'll get there. I know Dr. Mendoza is relatively confident as well. And it's just, you know, we need to really encourage people to still practice distancing, practice masking, so that we can remain safe, but also help people understand the importance of that vaccine. So we cannot make a vaccine, this particular vaccine, we can't make mandatory, and it won't be made mandatory until the FDA gives it its full approval. That's the only way you can have a vaccine become mandatory. Even with full approval, I don't really know what Governor Cuomo and the State Health Department will do with that. I have no idea. So I'm assuming that it will not be mandatory, and that people will just want to get back to school full-time, and that will be impetus enough and encouragement enough for them to become vaccinated. So I'm going to stop there. I know I talked for about five minutes straight. So I'll open it up to the Board. If you have any questions on anything that I said, please feel free to ask at this point.
Anyone?
Go ahead, Mike.
Carmen, do you have an estimated date or timeline where you think all the teachers will be vaccinated by? Has the state given you any guidelines in Monroe County?
I don't have, I think, you know, I would hope that the goal would be, you know, in my mind, by May 1, for many, many of our teachers and staff to be vaccinated. The key thing for me, Mike, is first, I want to make sure that we all have access to it. And right now, we just don't, because there's just not enough product. And, you know, my hope is that by March 1, all of us have really no issues getting an appointment. And then after that, it's, you know, for, you know, for two months for people, because there are some staff members and faculty members that are just not comfortable enough yet getting vaccinated. And my hope is that as more and more people get vaccinated, as it becomes a relatively normal thing to do, and it's, a lot of positivity is out there, and people aren't as frustrated with getting, with getting an appointment, that will, that will help boost our numbers. But, you know, my hope, my hope, Mike, is certainly by July 1, that the vast majority of our faculty and staff are protected by the vaccine.
Great, thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Thanks, Tammy.
Thank you very much. I know that's, that is the most important news that anyone wants to hear, and we know that it's fluid, and we know that things are changing all the time, and appreciate your commitment, as well as Dr. Mendoza and all the superintendents across the county that have worked so diligently to keep this moving forward and get us to a healthy and safe place. So we're all looking forward to that. Thank you very much.
You bet.
And moving on to Board Business, we do have quite a bit of business this evening. The first item being the bus purchase resolution, which is a roll call vote. So Cindy, would you like to take that over and administer the vote?
Brian, do you want to speak to that first?
Yeah, if you want to share, do you want me to share?
I just stopped.
Perfect, thank you. Let me get this going. All right, everybody see the little overview? So we're a little bit ahead of schedule with this compared to previous years. One of the reasons being, it's COVID-related, I guess you could say that for most things. But the factories where the buses are made, you know, there are concerns in the fall about possible shutdowns. So we wanted to make sure the timing that our buses arrived in plenty of time. So we're giving ourselves about a little, probably, I think, a four-week head start of our normal purchasing process. So our bond council put together the resolution like they do every year. And you notice the thing that stands out first is we're about $100,000 down from last year compared in buses to buses, same amount of buses overall, same styles, same capacities. The one huge difference is we're not buying a wheelchair-accessible bus this year. We only have to replace those in a two-year cycle, and then probably in eight to nine years from now, we'll start replacing those again, because we buy them in sister pairs, so they're matched up. In case one goes down, we have an extra. And so the price overall comes down without having the need for the wheelchair-accessible, which adds costs both on the mini-bus size when we do that and on the large-bus capacity size when we do the wheelchair. So still stay adaptable on these purchases over five years, but this will have a small decrease when we go talk about budget for two years from now, '22, '23. That's when these payments will start, and it all hinges on, obviously, Board approval tonight and voter approval in May. They're all aware of this in the factories, but they get a head start on the base models, and then, once they get a final go-ahead from voters at the districts, they add the extras that are unique to every district on those buses. So any questions on this process? It is a roll call, because it is allowing the district to borrow, and that's what the resolution is saying.
And as you mentioned, it's a good thing. It does represent some savings, so that doesn't always happen, so that, that's excellent. Does anybody have any questions before we?
Brian, real quick, are we replacing 10 buses, and what happens to those 10 buses?
Yeah, they go to scrap. They're, the bodies of them, because we go 10, 10-year cycle, so the bodies are pretty much shot from salt and rust. So we probably get anywhere from $500 to $1,500 in a scrap sale of them by the time they're done.
Thanks.
Yep.
Okay, then, can we please have a motion to accept the bus purchase proposition resolution?
All moved.
And second?
Okay, now for roll call. Tammy?
Yes?
Linda?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
Maria? Maria?
Yes, yes, thanks. I'm sorry.
And Mike Saff?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Okay, moving on then to the extra-classroom activity audit report and the corrective actions that are also recommended.
Yeah, so extra-class audit always happens after we do our regular financials. And so overall, a fairly good extra-class audit in comparison for the size of our district, once again, I think, commend the four central treasurers at the four secondary buildings and the administrative team there. Just a couple things that we really need to work on, it's the, we're, just get pressured all the time on the student involvement and making sure there's student involvement in every club, and that's the thing the auditors look for the most. That's come up a couple times, so they're calling us out on that. Schrader, a little bit more for the student involvement, making sure reconciliations are done. And, you know, it's a shock, every year we have had some turnover in a couple areas when we... It's the, we're just get pressured all the time on the student involvement and making sure there's student involvement in every club. And that's the thing the auditors look for the most. That's come up a couple of times. So they're calling us out on that and Schrader a little bit more for the student involvement. Making sure reconciliations are done. And, you know, it's a shock every year. We have had some turnover in a couple of areas when, you know, people realize that extra class accounts are not tax exempt, that sales tax has to be collected on many of the things they do. So we see that one that popped up as well. And just overall, the huge thing also this year that we're going to look to do is, with the district our size, there's a lot of clubs that go inactive. So we're going to create a new, new process where clubs with less than a hundred dollars, with no activity for a couple of years, we're gonna, we're gonna look to shut those down. The auditors don't like to see those hanging out there and kind of fold those funds into an overall student council account that goes back to the building in general. So overall, not too much. You notice that, um, you know, Thomas had a clean audit as well here. And so did Willink. So just a couple of things that Schrader and Spry that we're going to work on to correct for next year. But we'll be back in the same place next year because it's kids and club advisors. And, you know, it's a lot of change year to year. And that's the whole point. It's a learning experience for everybody with these accounts and clubs.
Brian, did they take into account that with COVID, kids weren't in school? So it was hard to have participation with them? I mean, could that be possibly why we got dinged a little bit?
Um, well, that goes hand in hand a little bit with, because there was no, nothing going. There was also nothing going on then. So there wasn't fundraisers. It's really referencing the first part of the year and, and those activities. There's a couple of gray areas where we did discuss with the auditors. Well, you know, things were going on and, and to start February, March, they kind of carried over. And so they, they were a little bit more generous in those aspects. But many of these refer back to some specific instances that they, that they found in their audit.
Any other questions or feedback from anyone? Okay, then can we have a motion, please, to accept the audit report and the corresponding corrective actions?
I'll make that motion, Tammy.
Linda, thank you. A second. That was Sue?
Sue.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Moving on to elementary bid work. Everyone's had a chance to.
Uh, we have the federal audit in between.
Brian, if you would speak to that, please?
Uh, we, we do have the federal audit to approve in between extra class and the bid work. Did I freeze?
No, I heard you.
It's number three, Tammy, on the, for board business. Do you see it?
Oh, I'm sorry. I said them together. Okay. So can we please have a separate motion to accept the 2020 federal single audit report?
And that audit was 100% clean. We had no findings. Everything we do with our federal grants and federal programs was within the scope that the federal government designates.
Okay, I make that motion.
Okay, thanks, Mike. In a second.
I'll second it.
Is Maria? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Excuse me. Number four, elementary bid work.
Uh, sure. So we opened bids Thursday, January 7th. Over in the new Webster Buildings and Grounds facility had a great turnout. The new warehouse was socially distanced and filled with probably close to 65 different companies, which is, was, is just great that we had that much participation. We opened up bids for general construction, plumbing, mechanical, electrical, ceiling and site work. Cause there's a lot going on at the seven elementary buildings. So we have some parking lot work, library renovations, some window replacements at most schools besides Plank North who had those done in the last project. The vestibule and security upgrades and some internal improvements. And then a second round of playgrounds that we're actually using state contract and didn't have to bid with Game Time, who's our provider of playgrounds. So you see bids came in exactly where we wanted to. We really hit the nail on the head here on the budget. So we're going to be able to do everything that we want, including all the alternates. As you can see here, we're very confident with the groups that put forward bids. Site contract, DeFiore has done work for the district in the past. They helped actually do some of the work on the Thomas and Schrader stadiums. And when those were built, same with ceiling, electrical, we've had Mylerson win bids before and work as contractor in the district. The plumbing, which is a small part, Ammering and Johnston, actually this was their first bid that they won. And RB Mac is growing in size. They're out of Buffalo. But they're doing some work in West Side districts and have reached over and a very positive experience that campus construction has had with them in other places. And Lloyd is a frequent winner of our mechanical bids as well. So all told, these bids came in perfect, right on the dot. And was great to see because just, you know, two years ago, we're opening up Spry bids and it was the exact opposite. So.
Excellent. Thank you for that explanation. Anyone have any questions? Can we have a motion then, please, to accept the elementary bid work as presented?
All moved.
Maria, second?
I second.
Bye. Saff, thank you, Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And just as the last point of clarification for your reference to on the backup documentation I gave you when it came to the ceiling contract, you know, I did put a note in there. One of the bidders did remove themselves after the fact. So I did highlight that. So you were aware as well. Cause they had input some wrong numbers in their bid and asked to be removed. So.
Okay, thank you. I believe all voted and motion carried. The secondary bid work will be postponed for the time being. And that brings us to the treasurer's report.
So the treasurer's report this month, majority of tax payments have been received. 90% of our pilot payments as well. And our facility rental money that you see coming in for this month is tied to the aquatic center ramping up. We are luckily one, we've kind of cornered the market on aquatics right now across the county. And we are doing a great job and have a lot of participation over there in our programs. You'll see school lunch is still on a lag with revenue for this month. Because we weren't even allowed to submit claims until November. So you'll see when we get into December, those funds show up. On the federal side, our grants had not, are not approved this month. And the majority of the revenues you see there for Wonder Care registrations. Other than that, on the appropriations expense base side, you know, we just see a lot more contractual expenses. Cause in September, a lot of our year-to-year service contracts are being re-upped. And capital project expenses slowing down now with the summer season coming, construction season coming to an end. And then you see cash flow on this treasurer's report jumped significantly because of all the tax collection. So much more aggressive in the investing now with having the funds available. And overall, you could see the rates are pretty low compared to last year. But still, still doing our best to invest.
Thank you for the explanation. Any feedback or questions from anyone? Okay, thank you. With that, can we have a motion, please, to accept the treasurer's report?
All moved.
Mike, in a second?
Second.
Mike Saff, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you, Brian. Now moving on to the BOSI's technology lease agreement.
Yep. So I'll just keep on chugging along here. So this is a lease agreement. This is year, this is lease number six. It's hard to believe that we started this endeavor of going to a one-to-one program six years ago. So we do it in chunks of three. So this is actually the second iteration of the third part of the lease, where we do all the laptops in the district. So we'll be replacing a thousand laptops going with a newer Dell product. That's really, really cool. I got to pilot it. I think everybody's going to enjoy them. We had pilots, people piloting them throughout the district. But also one thing we were able to include now in this lease is some cybersecurity help and incident response. We're going to be purchasing that through, through BOSI's one as part of this lease program as well. And also a variety of instructional operational support software is going to be included. Small savings on, from this lease, when you compare, what did we do three years ago? And now it's closing or re-upping for another three years. You'll see that cost came down a little bit, about $25,000 a year. You'll notice on the backup too, want to point out, cost does not equal the total quote from BOSI's due to the BOSI's borrowing and administrative costs that are also added onto there. So wanted to highlight that and separate it out for you.
Thank you very much. Does anybody want to speak to this at all? It is hard to believe it's been six years.
Yeah.
Yeah. Very far ahead of the game there. That's excellent. Can we have a motion, please, to accept the BOSI's technology lease agreement?
Removed.
That was Sue. In a second, by Mike. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Brian, for all of that work. And now moving on to the 2020, 2021 code of conduct. Jim will walk us through. Do I see him?
Jim is entering the meeting now. He's joining.
Okay, okay. So hopefully everybody's had a chance to read through. The code of conduct was, was the last committee that we were on, working on before COVID kind of dismantled everything and sent us in a different direction. But the work continued and it was a very excellent cross-section of stakeholders involved in, in the entire process. And now we have Jim who can speak to that and walk us through it. Hi, Jim.
Hey, everybody. Am I late? I'm so sorry.
You're right on time.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for your graciousness, Tammy. Thought I was going to go a little, a little later. All right. Do I have the ability to share my screen?
Yes, you do.
All right. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Karen made it clear I had 45 minutes. Or was it five minutes? I think it was five. All right. Um, so last fall, we, at the, well, at the summer school board meeting last year, the planning meeting, the topic of the code of conduct revisions came up. And with the shifts we were making in the district, we were very excited to take this on. And so committee was formed last fall and there are the committee members. And this was a fantastic committee to work with hardworking, dedicated people who really cared about taking the code of conduct and turning it from something that you dreaded reading, a non-teaching tool, very dry, not very informative in terms of the culture of Webster, and turning it into something that hopefully would become a highly effective teaching tool. And that people would see as kind of outlining our guiding principles and for students, especially in their families, help outline what to do and how to do it and how to really embrace compassionately connecting, joyfully engaged in always learning. So the purpose then, there was no intent to rewrite the entire code at this time. Again, it's a living document and the code must evolve and reflect what we value as a, as a school community. And begin work that ensures the code of conduct, something that provides for equitable treatment of individuals through accessing all educational opportunities that Webster, Webster has to offer. So this, that was really where we started. And the committee took this challenge on and we, we kept reviewing this every time we met. It was a living document and really that we weren't going to rewrite the whole thing. Rather, we're going to start working away at it. And again, getting back to that culture piece and the equity piece for all. And striving to starting to create a document that reflected that. The current state then, if you've looked at our code of conduct, it's current. It reads like a law book. Not many people read it unless they have to. And usually when they have to, they were sitting in my office at Willink or another principal's office or sitting with Mr. Gamina discussing the code of conduct. And those generally weren't very positive uplifting conversations. It was punitive in nature, typically used only during disciplinary hearings. There's little in terms of community building. Uh, schools review in September excerpts are distributed as well. But it was just, again, it was something that we, we reviewed, we checked the box. And hopefully if kids did the right thing, they were one Webster students that cared. The code of conduct kind of sat in the background. And what we started to think about was what a waste of this document in terms of changing behavior and, and getting everyone to really be either a titan or a warrior or one Webster person that cares, building in essential skills and so on. So that's really where we started. And again, you know, we looked at a lot of different codes of conduct and many of them had similar themes. They were law books. They were punitive in nature. It was just kind of the nature of the beast. We, we surveyed several and we found a couple that we really liked that had started to make that shift towards, and Tammy, you put it very eloquently, really focusing on positive intent. And, you know, you and, and Colleen especially focused on the shift to positive behavior supports. Really looking at how can we turn this into a teaching document with incorporating Karen, Colleen, the work you've been leading in the district in terms of MTSS, community building and so on. And Tammy, you know, really starting to look at it from that, that lens of positive intent. And we'll get to more of that in a minute. The timeline then, we started right before COVID hit. Uh, we examined our current code of conduct, identified areas that we could look at with the limitations placed on us by COVID-19. We did have a much grander plan involving students, stakeholders, families. But obviously with our limitations, we, we couldn't really pursue that very well. We examined other codes of conduct. And then we started to analyze the degree to which our code reflects our vision of compassionately connecting, joyful engage, always learning. And then March through August, we started to work on the language. What we zeroed in on was language sets the tone. And we wanted to realign the language to reflect our, our vision of equity in our district as well as positive intent. Uh, we finalized language. We couldn't get rid of all the legalese, obviously. Someone needs to be in there. Our district lawyers and I went back and forth many times. And, you know, we kept telling, I kept talking to Mike about it, saying, you know, we, we really want a teaching document. And he would say, Jim, that's really a nice goal, but these things need to be in there. And so we, we struck a pretty good balance where everybody was satisfied in terms of meeting the letter of the law, but following the spirit of turning this into a teaching document and focusing on positive intent and community building. So now we're in the board approval phase and then the next step will be, you know, where we want to go from here. Uh, important updates. There's no major operational changes. Sections were reordered for better flow. The real focus was on pages three through nine. If you look at it, you'll see that our, the grid is in there. And the grid and, you know, the, the care grid, along with the essential skills are a focal point for the first part of this document. And then we started to look at it, okay, starting to turn it into a teaching tool. Again, that positive intent piece, laying the groundwork for increasing focus on community building and restorative practices. Tammy, you want to talk for a? Tammy, you want to talk for a minute real quickly about that whole theme of positive intent?
Sure. So with Jim's guidance and professionals from the Piri group, we did, we began every every meeting with a community circle. And the whole, you know, trying to make the experience of creating the document reflect what we want to see happen in the classroom in terms of restorative practices and responsive classroom. And as Jim mentioned, the MTSS matrix that that Colleen has worked so hard on. So we wanted to see those principals connect to the district work, the mission and vision, and make it be a document that really reflects how we want our students to experience. What does a Code of Conduct, what can it look like to be more meaningful to them? So it really was a great committee, a lot of hard work. I think everybody really kind of felt badly that we weren't able to finish the way we intended. But it was, it was definitely important to hear the the impact of principals, of teachers, of what they see in their classrooms, to have that cross-section of adults who interact with the students and could share those experiences of how to make it more meaningful. So I know Linda, you know, we both enjoyed being on that committee and working together. It was really a very positive group.
I think that committee, it was, it was a lot of hard work. And I think we can all say we're very proud of this document because I think it truly reflects the values that we hold as a one Webster community. And in the end, it really focuses on the positive, like these are the acceptable behaviors. And and if they're not acceptable, how are we going to get back to acceptable behaviors? It was much more of a more positive community building document rather than, like Jim said, a punitive document. So it was, it was an incredible journey that we were on. So I'm very proud of it.
Thanks. Yeah, you know, it was because it really started to lay the groundwork. For aligning our Code of Conduct with the way we want to operate and with what we believe. And it was, it was exciting to see the energy in the room from teachers and administrators and and other people that were involved to, you know, to get excited about this thing because you know, not many people get too excited about the Code of Conduct. But it was, you know, it's been fun so far and we're excited about the next steps. You know, and really the last bullet, adults serving as critical care role models for appropriate behavior. Kids watch what we do. A lot of research shows that when kids see the adults in the building doing the right thing and getting along and treating each other with respect. Then that rubs off and they, that helps reinforce those behaviors. So while the Code of Conduct typically is is for students. You know, staff needs to walk the walk as well, as well as the school board. Everybody in the organization really does. Need to make sure that we're all doing the right thing for the right reason. And you know, I love that term, being an upstander, lifting each other up, because that's really what it comes back to. Next steps. Colleen Armstrong, not to put you too far on the spot, but your work is really instrumental in our next steps in building in community building, restorative practices and so on. You want to give a quick highlight of what's on the horizon for you guys? Because that will lay the groundwork for a lot of our next steps.
Sure, Jim. You know, we really want to take a look at our MTSS teams are very excited about you know, getting a hold of this document and being able to use their tier one teams. So that's where we're talking about what is available for all students to be able to go and use this, as you said, as a teaching tool and take, you know, start with different chunks of it and make sure that all students and staff and our families really understand what's in the Code of Conduct and how it is a tool to help them. And help us all be collaborative together for students to meet those care expectations. And really focus on that positive. So our tier one teams, we met actually last week and so they have a preview of the document and they're starting to think of ways that their teams can work in each building to spread the word and start, you know, sharing that information. And we also have a restorative practices leadership team in the district. And they, we, a little bit on pause in terms of the amount of training that we can do just because of Covid, but we will, we're still continuing that community building circle work. And spreading that throughout the district, especially at the secondary level.
Thanks. And then, you know, like, like you've heard, that work is really gonna be essential in our next steps of starting to build in restorative practices and community building practices into our Code of Conduct where instead of you know, always resorting to a disciplinary mode. We're gonna think of discipline in a different way because discipline really needs to, really means to disciple and to teach. And people hear the word discipline. And you know, they have a completely different feeling and and kind of idea on what that word means in their life. So we're hoping to start shifting that from discipline, you're in trouble, to disciple, to teaching. And again, going back to the idea of positive intent. Doing the right thing for the right reason and lifting kids up when they, when they do make mistakes. So and hopefully, you know, we'll be able to continue that work. Again, next year and the year after and the year after. And that kind of goes back to the idea that this is a living document. It needs to change over time. And it's never done. It continually evolves. And as we evolve as a system, this document will continue to evolve with us. So it's gonna be an exciting next couple of years as we continue our work in this area. So questions?
Thank you, Jim. Yeah, anyone, please feel free to jump in with any questions?
Jim, great job by the team. One question, I I noticed in the dress code that it didn't specifically state this also applies to remote learning. People sitting in their homes and wearing that. I'm assuming it does, but or is that a future version?
That's Mike, that's a great question. And I, as a principal, I spent a lot of time with the dress code, more than more than I probably would like to, but that's always been a challenge for us. And you know, I believe personally that the or anything else would apply if you're in I would hope that it was handled in not a punitive way. So one answer to the question is yes, we need to continue to evolve and build in some of these other learning styles and learning types, settings that we have. I can tell you when we go on the, when we used to go on the DC trip, the dress code applied. And so it's just a learning piece for us and it's a learning piece for the kids that you know, when when you're in school, whether you're at home or in the building. You should dress for success, dress like you're ready to go to school. And when kids are struggling in that area, it's a great conversation piece, hopefully with the teacher and the child and the family to help kids make better choices.
Yeah, perfect. And then also remember in remote learning, people could have posters behind them or other things that they can't bring to school. So
Yep.
Let's think about that, too.
Yeah, Amy Mustowski and I had a lot of conversations about that early in the year. Because she oversees the remote for elementary and then obviously Glenn would have, Glenn had a great handle on the secondary level. But I know, you know, we have had conversations about that and what's appropriate and what's not. Again, it's a, it's a learning piece for everybody. About what your background should look like, how you should be dressed. Making sure that there's not a lot of background noise and so on from your family and and others in the house. So it's been a great learning opportunity for for kids and for adults.
Jim, I just have a question. So as this is an evolving document, it's a living document. How do we disseminate it? How do we get it to go to parents so that they drive them to the webpage so they look at it on a regular basis? Or because I know agendas are starting to go by the wayside. So kids aren't probably bringing it home and reading it. Is there anything we're gonna do differently about that?
That's a great question. What the way, what I would like to see happen is once it's approved by the board. Asking principals and we can start, you know, putting little snippets in their newsletters that they send home. Directing parents to the new Code of Conduct, really focusing on pages three through nine. And really starting to drip and talk about the philosophical shift in that document. And then as we move down the road more towards community building, restorative practices and so on, that'll be another opportunity for us to link what we're doing with our Code of Conduct and really show people that it's an active document, it's a living document and it counts. So short term, once it's approved. Yes, I actually have two emails ready to go out to the building principals to put in their newsletters. Just to start getting people to go to and look at the document, getting some more feedback on flow and how they feel about the shifts. And then starting to really have it become part of the way we do business and the way we operate. So that people see it other than when they're sitting in an office having a tough conversation.
I know, yeah, we, we really didn't get to discuss the rollout too much, but I know the communications team, I'm sure will have great ideas about how to draw attention. And especially the fact that it's a living document, once changes do occur, that we can keep drawing people's focus back to those changes, back to those practices and processes that may have been improved through training to show how it's, how it's living and trying to reach students. Does anybody else have any feedback or questions or comments?
I just
Sue?
Yeah, I, I was going to ask the question about other stakeholder groups. And I see that your next steps include other stakeholder groups. So and I was specifically thinking of students. So that's great. And go ahead.
I was gonna, I was gonna say, one of our, part of our original plan was to go to all eleven buildings. And talk to kids at different levels about the Code of Conduct and get some feedback from them. And really make them part of the process as well as families in specific groups, stakeholder groups in the community, like FIRE, PTSA and so on. So obviously, once our restrictions are lifted, we'll be much more active with getting feedback from them and meeting with them.
Good. And and the Code of Conduct is actually a policy. So it is a living document and should be reviewed and altered regularly. So just that plug for policy. It's nice, nice job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, then, can we please have a motion to accept the Code of Conduct policy as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mike. In a second. Was that Mike? Okay, Sue. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you so much, Jim.
You're welcome. Thank you. It's been great to be part of this and I look forward to our next steps. And my apologies for being late. I was trying to time Brian Freeman's presentation and I was wrong. So my apologies.
Awesome job, Jim. Thank you so much.
Alright, thank you. Take care, everybody.
Have a good week.
Great seeing you.
Take care. Okay, speaking of policy. Here we go. Number nine, first reading. We have a couple first reading and a couple quite a few second readings. Sue, would you like to take us through those?
Yes, Cindy's gonna share the screen. I think we just have one first read or did I miss the second one? So just one there. Animals in school. So when we were reviewing this policy and we got, Cindy, could you scroll down? Yes, when we got to the the paragraph that is in, is highlighted and red and crossed out, we were just had a question about this and we were wondering if that kind of specificity was necessary in this particular policy. And we wanted to see if we could eliminate that. We checked with our attorney and he thought that that he was fine with that. So we decided that that would be better eliminated and make the policy a little bit better. So that's our recommendation. Is to eliminate that paragraph. Does anybody have any questions?
I agree. Looks like it was written by a lawyer.
Yeah. Yeah. You want it a little more friendly? Okay, any other questions?
Sue, does this apply to therapy dogs? Or is that a separate policy?
That that's separate. This is just as it relates to instruction.
So I actually had another question in the back of my mind. When we, when we were able to conduct learning walks and be in all the buildings. Almost every building had animals of various kinds. And so I'm just wondering, is that it's probably harder to do this year or or to just to care for them? Do we have fewer animals in the classrooms and with students across the district?
It's my understanding, just and I don't even know where I heard this, was that either the teachers or students took the animals home last year and I guess they've remained there. Is that correct?
Yep, they usually are taken home over break and over the summer.
Okay.
So, yep.
Okay, then, with that, can we have a motion, please, to accept the first reading of the policy?
I'll make the motion.
Linda, second by Saf. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So hard not to see everyone. Okay, and then moving on to old business. I assume that's what I was referring to, the second reading of the list of policies here.
Right. And there's a whole bunch of information that we went over in our last meeting. I don't recall that there was any specific questions. Does anybody have any new questions?
No.
Would you like me to review them? Or are you okay? Because this is a second reading.
I think we're okay unless unless anybody has any specific questions. I know we just had a very full agenda in December when we were gonna accept the second reading. So we just tried to create some space. Is everyone okay with this? With the second reading with this information? Okay, then can we have a motion, please, to accept the second reading of policies? Fifty-seven, ten, fifty-three, fifteen, fifty-three, thirty, fifty-three, fifty, fifty-three, seventy, and fifty-five, forty.
So moved.
Thank you, Maria. Second?
Second.
That was Mike Saf. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Motion carries. Moving on to board reports. Our school liaison reports. Anyone?
Alright, I'll start.
Okay, Steph, I hear you.
Well, it has to be noted that Clem North has been supporting the Buffalo Bills, even though their two administrators are giant fans. Hear that, David? They're giant fans, not jet fans. Designed flyers that were sent home to the families for the Clem North Buffalo Bill Spirit Days. That they had the past two Fridays. And they'll be doing it again tomorrow. And the flyer for tomorrow was designed by the UPK students. And Clem North would like to think that their spirit has helped Buffalo in their victories. And I think that's true. Other news, over a hundred families participated in a virtual magic show that was organized by the PTSA. And Clem North is looking forward in the coming weeks to sharing Valentines in a Covid-friendly way. And the administration is preparing some chat and check-in virtual sessions with their fully remote students. Additionally, Clem North is very excited to begin a book talk for any interesting or interested staff members to further discuss diversity and equity. And finally, the PTSA at Clem North is organizing a virtual assembly for all their students, both the hybrid and remote. And finally, the P T A P T S A at Clem North is organizing a virtual assembly for all their students, both the hybrid and remote. Uh featuring uh the um songwriter and performer Jared Campbell. And if if you want to know the date, I I can fill you in on that later on. And the next P T S A meeting for Clem North is February fourth and they will will have a guest speaker.
Thank you, Mike.
Welcome.
I know Clem North also had uh Terry McCarthy come and share their last P T S A meeting. Um and talk about the fire group and their work, so um that was a great way to to share and have a person connected to that. Get the message out for their school. Anybody? Want to follow up? Sue?
I can give my Schlegel report. Is that okay, Tammy?
Yes, please do, please do.
Okay. Um so for the holidays, the Schlegel staff and students made don generous donations to the Hope House. And the students also made cards for the residents of the Saint Anne's Home. They're gonna be having um books Bingo for Books again this year to go along with Literacy Week. Um they're looking for readers if anybody wants to volunteer to read. I think it will be done remotely. Also, in place of the previously planned fundraiser, they're gonna do a dance-a-thon. For a fundraiser. And the funds are gonna go towards the shade structure, which is scheduled to be installed this summer by our own buildings and grounds. And I just want to say it just continues to amaze me that the length and creativity towards making um the student's school experience meaningful and special. In the COVID world is just amazing. The, you know, the. The brainstorming and ideas that go back and forth. It's just, it's just wonderful. It really is. It's it is amazing. So kudos to all the parents. And staff, of course. Uh the next meeting is March sixteenth. On a Tuesday. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Maria, would you like to share?
Sure. Um congratulations to Mrs. Emily Carpenter and her DuWitt Road students who were featured on W H A M. Channel thirteen's Bright Spot last month, showing compassion to others. Students learned about the power of helping others by making fleece blankets, scarves, and cards for Mary's Place Refugee Outreach. DuWitt Road students and staff also collected over nine hundred food items, which were delivered to Hope Ministry in honor of World Kindness Day in November. And the students are advocating for the purchase of race-appropriate crayons in the interest of diversity and equity. They are working with Principal Shiptle to make this happen. The next Spirit Day at DuWitt is on January twenty-eighth. This month's theme is Dress-A-Like Day. Everyone is encouraged to find a friend, group of friends, teachers to dress alike. And for a list of future Spirit Days and themes, please check the principal's newsletter. DuWitt parents are encouraged to join the P T S A monthly Zoom meetings on the second Monday of the month. To join the meetings, please email duwittptsatwebsterpts.com. And I know it's a little soon, but it's never too soon. Interested families are encouraged to contact DuWitt or Central P T S A for positions that are available for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And the DuWitt meeting is on February eighth, which is a Monday at six-thirty on Zoom. And that's it.
Excellent. Thank you, Maria.
You're welcome.
I'll do uh. Plank North. A couple things. So first, the same thing Maria talked about, they are doing the Color for Everyone, which is the um. Crayons depicting all the different races. Uh so I thought that was pretty cool that they're building diversity and equity uh into their activities. Uh they have reintroduced a therapy dog to Plank North named Louis. That's pretty cool. And then they did jump rope for heart and you had to be able to jump rope without a mistake for two and a half minutes, so maybe when we meet in person, we could all try that. Um they continue to do very well on fundraising. They have a number of activities that are getting great participation. Um and don't have a great way to spend the money because most of the activities that they normally would spend the money on are no longer allowable under COVID. Um and then the last thing I'll talk about is they're continuing to partner with the City of Rochester School, school number seventeen. I think this is the fourth year in a row they've been doing this. They have helped nine families and each of those families got four soft reusable bags filled with food. And then each person in the family received a coat, socks, small gift, and a twenty-dollar gift card. They are incredibly proud of uh that and they got a nice thank you note from um. The city for doing that, the city school district for doing that, so um. They're they're incredibly proud of that part of it and they're gonna continue with that transition or that tradition, not transition. That is it for Plank North. Next meeting is March tenth.
Thank you, Mike. Janice?
Sure, I can start with State Road and if I forget anything, Tammy, you can uh just chime in. We at State Road, they also had the magician that Mike Saffletto was talking about. There were three schools that were able to participate in that. And it had a very high participation rate and the kids loved it, families loved it and it helped connect the remote and the hybrid, which is awesome. They mentioned the third graders enjoying their recorders that were purchased. Um we also had, we talked a little bit about a book fair, a possible online book fair in the spring with fundraisers being difficult during COVID. Um an online book fair could be a decent option and maybe even setting up a tent outside um COVID-safe, whatever weather pending. We also had a good conversation about this school year and the hybrid models and looking forward to September and obviously everybody's goal. Being, you know, five days a week, as many kids as possible. So we had a really good conversation about that. And then they talked about yearbooks and the struggle with yearbooks this year and memory books and. How everyone's trying to gather pictures as much as they can to try to keep a nice memory for all the kids. Um especially the fifth graders who, you know, will be leaving the school and moving on next year, having a nice memory book for them and then finding a way to hopefully celebrate safely. And honor their um elementary years. Am I missing anything? And I know the next next meeting's in March, but I didn't write down the date.
Um no, that's excellent. Thank you. And then um Linda, do you want to speak to Plank South? There you are.
Yes, um yes, their meeting was um held on the thirteenth of January. Some of the upcoming events that they'll be hosting, um they want to do a paint night or a paint day sometime in late February or early March. And it'll be where kids will be given the canvas and then they can either purchase the brushes and the paints or use their own. And then art instructor will guide them to paint some sort of a picture. I think it um took place at maybe at Clem South and it was a huge success, so um they they wanna wanna try to do it there. And I think up to a hundred families can participate in it, so it'll be a great, great way to connect um with other other people in the community. Um they'll also be celebrating a Global Day of Play on February third and. The classes will have game stations throughout and students will be able to choose from different games to play with. Um Family Literacy Night is now going to be Family Literacy Month. It's still going to be focused on reading around the world. And there will be various Zooms that um will happen throughout the month that families can participate in. And um do take take part in different literacy activities. Um there'll be a karate night via Zoom in March and that'll allow kids to um experience a little bit of what karate is. And that will be free to the first one hundred families. The Science Fair is amazingly still going to take place, so it'll look a little bit different. It will be um virtually this year. And there will be more details coming um in the next month or two. They're gonna push it out a little bit longer. Um the staff continues to do story time every other week and that is hugely popular. And they um. Are looking into doing Bingo for Books again um. Because that was very successful. Their next meeting will be February tenth. Um Schrader's meeting will be held um on January twenty-seventh, so um that's coming up. And then Janice and I were both at Spry's um last night. So a couple of things that they're doing, they had a survey, I believe, that went out to the students to to see what types of activities the students would be interested in. Um and a couple of the top contenders were trivia night, virtual scavenger hunt, a snowman or snow sculpture contest, and a paint night. So the members of the P T S A will begin to plan some of those um events so that the kids can have those through the winter months. Um the intermurals began this this week and uh Mrs. Ms. Saunders said it was hugely um successful. There were thirty students that signed up and attended on the first day. And the kids had a ball being in the gym, just being kids after school. Um the Academic Challenge Bowl and Drama Clubs are also being held after school as well as the indoor track they are beginning to condition. Um their next meeting is on March seventeenth. And that's all I have.
That's an indoor track. Uh Kate is very excited Monday for her first indoor track after school, so. I was talking to Mr. Sabatino today in our household, is very excited for that.
So for Clem South, they also hosted a variety of of very um. Unique events, a virtual snowman building contest, plans for Valentine's Day, uh virtual read-a-thon. Every P T S A is just going above and beyond in really unique and creative ways to engage their students and families, both remote and in school. And they just. Deserve our our a great debt of gratitude for all the work that they're doing and also as they look to next year. Um a lot of them are looking to expand their outreach, how to reach parents for some of the leadership roles that they'll need help filling. Which is. Always an ongoing um challenge, but especially different this year without having the face-to-face with people. So if anyone's interested, please reach out to your child's school and and see the unique and really wonderful things that are going on there. Okay, I think that brings us to Monroe County School Board and the Legislative Committee.
Yes, I believe I forwarded you the legislative update on uh January seventh. Um I'm not gonna go over that because there was a lot in there and things changed so quickly that some of it's probably outdated anyway. But um during the meeting. We talked about, um well, at the request of our regents, our regences, um we identified issues. That um. That they could help with so that things would go smoother for school districts and the things that we identified were to allow more local control. And flexibility on assessments and also flexibility on C T E certifications and pathways to graduation. Flexibility on the use of COVID aid. Relief from duplicate. Duplicate financial transparency reporting, um transportation reimbursement, which we've talked about. Um and also the licensing and testing location issues that we've had, which is creating um. Driver shortage shortages. Um we would like to have uh more lead time on the structure and administration of assessments. Um the extension of payback period for reserve fund usage. Mandate relief and technology and internet access equity. And then. Also looking for guidance on the budget vote and board elections to see what that might look like this year. They'd like to have, everyone would like to have a. You know, a heads up as to what's going to happen there. And then I I had a question because I think the governor's budget came out. Brian, have you had a chance to look at that and make any conclusions or are you gonna do a report for the board or?
Yeah, I'm planning on doing a report, I think, at the next board meeting. Um right now, I'm just waiting. It came out midnight on Tuesday, like the runs. Um but it is significantly different than in years past, so I have to do some unwinding. Um what we're still waiting on is the district-specific information that he used. So Cindy's on the lookout. Every year we get a packet. It's usually usually maybe at the most a week after um. That gets released where we get all the in district individual specifications of uh like the changes in aid formulas or um aid ratios. So just holding out on that um to kind of put some of the puzzle pieces together that are sitting there.
Right, okay, good. And that's my report for legislative and we have a next, our next meeting is gonna be changed. I think it's usually on a Wednesday. It's now gonna be on Thursday. And they're gonna try to have um some of our new representatives there. For a Q and A, so. That's what's happening definitively.
Um and whenever we talk about next meeting, we're just. We know it's Zoom until further notice.
Okay.
Right? Especially, yeah, with Monroe County as well. And labor relations.
Well, Linda and I attended the virtual meeting and the topic was workforce availability. And one of the presenters was our own Dave Swinson. Um the COVID nineteen has been a challenge for everyone. And and dealing with COVID nineteen has been especially challenging for school districts, uh especially from the staffing uh standpoint. Now flexibility is a key word that was used throughout the presentation because each school district is unique and has different needs. A one-size-fits-all in regard to in-person and remote and hybrid learning is difficult. And each different, each district is trying to accommodate a host of issues, including high-risk health concerns, medical leaves. Childcare needs, family situations, just to name a few. And it's important for school board members to consider that school districts are dealing with coordinating coordinating school bus drivers. Substitutes, regular staff, certification areas, negotiated contracts, memorandums, uh understanding with unions. A whole host of directives from the New York State Department of Health, the Monroe County Department of Health, the CDC. Educational law, civil service law. And we all have to prepare for the unknown. And all of this will have a a impact on our budget. So um it's all up in the air right now.
It honestly was an outstanding presentation, Dave. It was one of the best ones that I think I've ever been to. And it was recommended that perhaps we consider um speaking to our P T S As um to let parents know some of these challenges. Um I think it's important. This is, this is a year unlike any other. And and we've really had to think outside the box and our HR departments have really been stressed to try to fit it all together as well, so. It it definitely is food for thought for us to take it to P T S A, just to give parents that, let them know.
Absolutely. Thank you both.
If if it's okay, if I can just add one quick thing.
Please do, please do.
Just, I do think it's important uh as a board and for the community to know the uh the work that not only um. The leadership of the district has done to kind of uh manage all of this, but I do want to shout out and I I did share this in the presentation, shout out to all our staff um here in Webster. Um there are so many people that are are doing things that they wouldn't normally do. Um and have done things uh without question uh for the betterment of the of the district and for for our students. And and there's so many people um in all our different roles that we play. Um and I do think it's important that our community knows uh that we're we're pretty lucky to have the people we have. It's a special group of people and they're. You're in it for the right reasons and they've done a lot of work to make this work. Um and you can see that with our infection rate being low. Um and uh and the work that's going on, so I just think it's important that we share that, so thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you to bring for bringing that to everyone's attention. Information exchange. Mike and I were both attended in attendance at a Zoom meeting. About uh language acquisition for English language learners across the coun across the county. And uh the presenter was Jamie Scripps from Rush Henrietta. And uh. Mike, I'll let you. Jump in and share a few thoughts if you'd like to.
Sure. Um I thought it was really interesting because um he talked about, they talked about the challenge. the challenges of trying to teach English to many, many students who don't speak English at home. Their parents only speak their native language, many of which came from areas that were, could have been third rural. They even talked about war zones immigrated to this country. And so the challenges are trying to teach these individuals English and conduct classes in English when they don't have the support at home. I thought that was kind of the biggest challenge. And many of these homes have poor internet. So when you're doing remote, it's more challenging. On the strength side, though, they did say that the digital allows more individual instruction, students to go at their own pace, which is helping. And it also gives the teachers the opportunity to see the family situation and get to know the family. So they've also been able to engage. So I think there's been some positives and some challenges with the remote aspect. But it was really enlightening about how challenging it is to continue to do ELL during COVID, like many of the other types of instructions. That was kind of my takeaway from it at a high level.
Yet, no, I agree. And that percentage, even a small percentage, exists for every district in the county. And another thing that was kind of interesting, too, is for so many families, transportation is an issue. So one of the good points that helped was the internet allowing families to stay home and stay connected and not worrying about having to get their kids to school or to these special lessons. So, right, there were some strengths as well as, as well as the challenges. But it was a great presentation. And in terms of the next one, it's scheduled for February 10th and may take place. Like everything else, it's a very fluid schedule, and hinging on, of course, circumstances, the presenters, and where we see ourselves in February. So we'll stay tuned for that.
One other comment, Tammy. It was interesting that over the past four years, their ELL learners have doubled from 200 to 400. And that's now about seven and a half percent of their 5,300 students.
And I think, too, they thought that was a pretty accurate estimate across the county that each district was, was handling the same challenges. Yes, thank you. Moving on to the Executive Committee, much of the conversation that we're having here is also being held by superintendents and board presidents throughout the county. A lot of questions around board elections. Will, how will the vote occur? Will it be similar to the last vote where presidential election where you could vote in person or by absentee ballot? And would signatures be required? And all of these things are, are questions that we're waiting for the governor's guidance on. So everyone is doing the same, trying to stay informed and keep up morale and see the light at the end of the tunnel. Our standing committees audit, we've heard from, I don't know between Mike and Maria and Mike, if you'd like to add anything.
No, we had a good report.
Yep. Yep. Okay. Policy, we've also done a fair amount of work on the seat. Sue, do you want to add anything?
Just our next meeting is February 11th, and I will get the agenda out by the end of this week.
Thank you. Budget Advisory, I know that came up at the Central PTSA meeting where people were, people are looking forward to it, Brian. They're looking for dates. Probably held via Zoom. And I, I want to say March 4th and March 18th.
So we got something a little different this year that's coming out for Budget Advisory. So going to try something new, see how it works.
Okay, so now everybody's intrigued. Okay, thank you. Strategic Planning, Sue, I'll let, I'll let you jump in. And I'll, I'll just jump in after if you, if you don't, you know, if you don't mind. And we just had a meeting.
Yeah, we just had a meeting this afternoon. And we were talking about, well, Larry's thinking about our, our meeting that we have at the end of the year, when we go over our metrics and then do our goal setting. So we really just pretty much brainstormed what kinds of things we could do this year, because we won't have access to the data that we have had in the past. And even if we did, I mean, how do you compare a regular year to a COVID year? So we really just, that. And I think that he'll probably come up with some nice ideas. And there'll be some celebrations there. And we'll, we'll get some information to help lay the groundwork going forward. Do you have anything else to add, Tammy?
No, only the conversation could have gone on for, for far more than an hour.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah, we, I mean, we talked so much to think about in post-COVID schooling, and what does that look like? And what kind of stories can we tell absent the data and metrics that we're used to seeing, which is exactly what you just said. So, and it's so important, this process that's been in existence since 2010 is so comprehensive and cohesive and weaves everything that we do as a district together. And it just serves as such a good barometer for us to gauge student success and their academic experiences. So it's important, really, it's really important, exciting work. So we'll look forward to the next meeting.
Yep.
Okay. And with that, that leads us to WEN.
Yes, we had a meeting last Wednesday. A couple of things that are coming up, there will be a Narcan training. It will be held virtually, and it's on February 1st. And there is a sign up if you go onto the WEN website. They're also looking into partnering with the CDC again for a drug takeback in the spring. That's where hundreds and hundreds of pounds of prescription medications and over-the-counter medications are collected. And it gets them off the streets away from our kids. So that, that's really important. And it's usually a really, really very highly attended event. They are also working on a vaping, some vaping education material, and also a video. They're going to start to collaborate with some students to get their insights and, and try to figure out the target audience for this and, and work on that. And they're also looking to develop a survey for our school community and also the entire Webster community at large, just for different perspectives on substance abuse and impacts on the community. It would help identify some types of programming that, and educational opportunities that the, the coalition could provide. And they're always looking for members. They really would love more student voice. So they're really gonna try to, try to get more student voice. And then next meeting is February, it's the second Wednesday in February. Sorry, I don't have that. And that's it.
Thank you, Linda. Okay, this leads us to our consent agenda, which everybody has hadn't had a chance to review. Minutes, personnel actions, recommendations on the, for the committee on special education and cooperative bids. Can we have a motion, please, to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Suf, second by Sue. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. That brings us to our adjournment. And February has us in a couple executive sessions and workshops. So with that, we'll, I'm sorry.
Did we have a tenure one for Dave Swinson? Or is that part of the?
The part of the tour on December 28th?
No, didn't you have a tenure when you wanted us to act on?
Oh, yes. And that would be included in the consent agenda.
Okay.
Yes. Any other questions? Okay, with that, all in favor for the consent agenda motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. So with that, thank you so much to everyone. Please continue to stay safe and healthy and keep our kids in school. Carm, did you want to add anything? We appreciate everybody's efforts wholeheartedly.
Yeah, get vaccinated as soon as you can. Get those Springsteen tickets at the same time.
Hey. We just got my mother an appointment on April 10th.
Oh, good.
That was as soon as we could get it. At 5:45 on a Saturday afternoon.
Yeah, other dates are going to pop up, Sue. I mean, so you, it'll be, I think it'll, you know, again, it's great to have something in April, but I do have a feeling you'll be able to get something sooner. So.
We'll hope so.
Yeah. All right.
I just want more, a little more comment before we go. Tammy, Tammy and I are working, continuing to work on our website development. And so I will be sending you all a link because we're, we're, our hope is to get it live by the beginning of February. And we just have a couple more tweaks, but we want to look at it before we bring it back and set it up live. So look for an email, because there'll be a piece that needs to be edited over the weekend. So.
Awesome.
Excite, also exciting work. Okay, with that, can we have a motion to adjourn, please?
So move.
Suf, and Mike is a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Take care, everybody. Have a wonderful evening.